Good morning and welcome to this formal meeting of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Ray Wooton and I'm the chairman of the committee. Councillor Martin Griggs, vice-chairman of the committee, is also in attendance. I'd like to welcome the members of the press and public who are in attendance and those listening to this online. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure that their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent and also to ensure that their mobiles, sorry, and also remind you that if you wish to ask a question during the course of the meeting, can I ask you to please raise your hand and request to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman. Members of the committee also, please switch off their microphones when not speaking and obviously on when you are speaking. Can you please ensure that when you do speak, you are close to the microphone like I am now because there's been several committee meetings where members and officers have spoken and we can't hear what you're saying. So please ensure that you speak into the microphone. For officers participating via Teams, please raise your hand virtually or type speak in the chat function. When invited to speak, you should unmute your microphone and switch on your video. When you're not participating in the meeting, please make sure you have muted your microphone and switched off your video. I'd like to personally thank the Democratic Services and Scrutiny representatives, Nick and Kiera, for this committee and for their contribution in organising and supporting the delivery of this meeting. We shall now move to the formal business. Nick, agenda item one, apologies for absence.
Thank you, chairman. We've got apologies from councillor Carrington. Councillor Ashton is a substitute member. Councillor Morn, councillor Skinner is the substitute member and also councillor Lynda Wooton. Councillor Kelly is self-isolating but will appear via Teams as an observer.
Thank you very much indeed, Nick. Now, agenda item two, declarations of councillors' interests. Members are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest forms. Do any members have any interests to declare? No. Then move on to agenda item three, minutes of the previous meeting of the Environment and Economic Scrutiny Committee, held on the 16th of February 2021. This item is to prove and sign the minutes at the last meeting as a correct record. Do I have a proposer and seconder? Proposed and seconded by councillor Alexander, councillor Haig. We will now vote on the minutes. You are voting on whether you agree that the minutes are true record. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Any against and any abstentions? Those minutes are correct and agreed that they are true record of the minutes, held on the 16th of February 2021. Item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I have just one announcement. Today, there is a long agenda this morning and three pre-decision items. I therefore like to ask officers to summarise the key points of their report and what is required by the committee and in regard to members of this committee, to stress the importance of concise questions and contributions. I'd also like to note the attendance of councillor Mrs Alison Austin and councillor Mrs Wendy Boquet, who attended this meeting via Teams. Executive councillors' announcements. Councillor Davy?
Thank you very much, chairman, and I welcome everyone to this first meeting of the committee. Firstly, chairman, we continue to work in unprecedented times and this is certainly true for the businesses that we support. As such, we continue to be responsive to needs and we are championing business, creating opportunities and supporting growth across Lincolnshire and Greater Lincolnshire. The economy has grown again this month by an estimated 0.8%. This is the fourth consecutive month of growth, albeit it is slower compared with March, which is 2.4%, and April, which is 2.0%. We continue to see many positive investments across Lincolnshire from existing and new employers. However, we are also very alive to the challenges that are facing them, particularly around skills and employment. As the furlough system winds down, changes to employment levels we watch very keenly. And I can report to the committee this morning that as of the end of May, there were 20,200 people who remained on furlough in Lincolnshire, which represents 6% of the workforce. The total for the Glep area is 29,600, again representing 6% of the workforce. We however feel that a number of those people still on furlough are probably already working in other employment opportunities. So that number could be distorted. To put this into context, we believe there are over 80,000 vacancies currently in the county area and that is going to put real pressure in terms of how we get our businesses to perform as the economy unwinds and reopens fully. We'll be obviously talking about skills generally during this work of this committee and I look forward to that discussion. For many businesses that I have been talking to, from the visitor economy to the agri-food sector, they are recruiting but they need so many more people. At the recent Coastal Developers' Forum, which I chair, businesses were keen to share with MPs and civil servants the number of vacancies that they are currently carrying and how it is limiting their ability to recover and respond. We play a massively vital role in enabling this dialogue with government and we continue to make the voice of Lincolnshire businesses heard in Whitehall and in Westminster. And on the internal investment, inward investment, we are dealing with an unprecedented level of inquiries from international investors at this moment in time. So the work we've done over a number of years through Team Lincolnshire is starting to pay dividends. Lincolnshire is a place that people want to invest in and we must take advantage of that. The levelling up agenda is a huge opportunity for Lincolnshire and it's been a very busy few months developing the bids. The executive tasked officers with supporting district bids alongside our own submission to the Levelling Up Fund and the Associated Community Renewal Fund. LCC's Levelling Up Fund bid focuses on movement around the UK food valley, in particular improvements to the A16 corridor. We expect to hear more on this bid later in the summer. The Community Renewal Fund will be announced in early August. Lincolnshire's bid includes three programmes that will be delivered by LCC. They focus on delivery in three areas: a Green Lincolnshire, a Digital Lincolnshire and an Entrepreneurs Academy. There'll be linkages developed between each of the three programmes and to other proposed community renewal activity. And any business facing activity will be delivered in line with the Business Lincolnshire Growth Hub offer to ensure that any investment is logical, accessible and adds value to the current business offer and that customers access the best support to meet their individual needs. Another area of work I would like to highlight to you is our continued investment in business, from the Rural Business Grants to digital voucher scheme. These are ranging from outside catering facilities to support changed trading patterns post-COVID, new tourism projects, to food business investment through to supporting our village shops. We have focused on helping businesses survive, farm and respond to the pandemic. And as rules change, there'll be further opportunities for the economy to open up. You have a number of papers on the agenda today that consider the shape of our high streets and town centres, as well as how people want to work in the future, and our role in creating flexible spaces where businesses can flourish. At that point, chairman, I'll stop. I'm happy to take any questions from committee members and I hope for a successful meeting today. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Davy. Are there any questions for councillor Davy, for members of the committee, before I move on? Nope. Are there any other announcements by executive councillors? Nope, thank you then. I'll move on to are there any announcements by senior officers, Justin Brown, David Hickman and Vanessa Strange? Nope. We'll move on now to agenda item five, which is the Market Deeping Grow On Business Space. This is a pre-decision item on proceeding to provide grow-on space in the Deepings area through alterations to the Aventis Business Centre in Market Deeping, which was emailed to all members of the committee on Wednesday, the 7th of July. This report will be presented by Mick King, head of Economic Infrastructure, and Amanda Bond, special projects officer, who are attending via Teams. The views of the committee will be reported to councillor Martin Hill at OBE, the leader of the council and executive councillor for resources, communications and commission, and to councillor Colin Davy, executive councillor for economic development enforcement and planning, sorry, environment and planning, when they consider the decision between the 19th and the 23rd of July. Over to you, Mick King, for your presentation. Good morning.
Good morning councillor. Thank you for that, chairman. My colleague Amanda is the project manager for this scheme is going to lead the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, chairman. Good morning. Just to provide some background, having identified the supply of office space in the Deepings area could not meet the demand, the economic infrastructure team explored options for delivering an Aventis II grow-on facility through both a new build and the use of existing commercial premises in the area. The new build was unsuccessful at the time in attracting external funding and the repurposing of existing premises was considered a high revenue risk in the shorter to medium term from the professional advice we took. Consequently, the strategy was revised to focus on optimising the space and facilities within Aventis Business Centre to assist the businesses in the shorter term. So in February, we presented a paper to deliver the alterations to Aventis. But the ongoing detailed design and survey work resulted in the scope increasing to include fire safety and repair works. So the paper sets out project one, that is the original scheme of proposed alterations and their benefits. And project two sets out the fire safety and repair works that are now part of the scope. As an update to the paper, the fire strategy for the building has been comprehensively considered by our advisers to ensure that LCC meets its obligations to fire safety and building regulations. A meeting was held on Friday last week to confirm what work needs to be done. Prior to that, we have worked on a worst case scenario, which is set out in the paper. It's not possible to quantify the agreed works today, but we are working on that and we're expected to see a slight reduction in terms of both the cost and the programme, meaning less overall disruption to the tenants, which we're very keen to ensure. The fire strategy is currently being amended to reflect these works. So we are seeking support to do both project one and project two to achieve improvements and also to address repairs, which are deemed to be more economic and efficient under one contractor rather than delaying until after these works. This, in its totality, will ensure that the building is in a strong position to cater for needs of local businesses going forward. Thank you. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any further speakers? No. I'm now going to move on to members of the committee to comment on this item. Please notify councillor Griggs if you wish to ask a question. Councillor Baxter?
Yeah, good morning and thank you, chair. Obviously, I'm keen to see development in the Deepings of any kind and any investment is most welcome. And I'm very grateful for the briefing that was provided to me by officers a few days ago in order that I could ask a lot of the questions beforehand. I'd say we in the Deepings are disappointed that there is not enough funding available for the Aventis II. That was always the promise. From the day that, almost from the day that Aventis was opened, we realised that the waiting list was too long and we need more incubator grow-on space for the Deepings. And we've been told and we've hoped the whole way along that we would get a second centre. If that's not financially possible for whatever reason, then that's a shame. There is also other investment within the area, within yards of the Aventis Centre. We've got workshop space being built. We've got an empty factory that was occupied by Landis-Gir who have sadly chosen to move either to Poland or to Vietnam, depending on who you read. And so hopefully we'll have new tenants in that factory before too long, which will maintain the sustainability of the Aventis Centre and all its occupants. The occupants, if you don't know, include a cafe, which is much used not only by the occupants of Aventis but also by other local businesses and also people who live in the Deepings. It's a destination cafe, if you like, so a small business doing catering within a site for incubator businesses. The current centre has had problems with snagging from day one. When it opened, it had a wind turbine of sorts, which never quite worked and I never quite saw how it would work, being shielded from the wind by the Aventis Centre. And also the staircase, which you'll note in the, hopefully in the pack, that the staircase, which is quite ornate and stately and an architect's dream, is being removed. I'd like to know what the architects who originally designed the building think of this. But from speaking through with the officers, the proposed changes, they seem relatively positive in terms of providing more space. Not as good as a second Aventis Centre and they take away some of the stateliness and palatial atmosphere of the Aventis Centre, but they do create more room for businesses. Businesses which include Zazzle Media, which are now really, they're ready to move. If we had somewhere for them to go to, they started small and they're now multimillion, still based in Aventis, I believe, and just shows what you can do if you've got the facilities available. And we need more in the Deepings and no doubt across the county. What I would say in terms of recommendations to the portfolio holder and the leader, this place needs to be future-proofed as much as possible. So we need rooms and facilities for video conferencing. So within the boardrooms and the meeting rooms and the conference rooms, we need video conferencing facilities so that perhaps one day we can, we Deepings councillors can join in these meetings without having the pleasure of driving to Lincoln. We also need encouragement for tenants to move on so that when, if somebody sets up a one-man band within Aventis and then grows and takes on staff, that eventually, like an unruly teenager or somebody going off to university, we can move these businesses on, encouraging them to stay in Lincolnshire but encouraging growth and making room for other businesses coming through. So on the whole, not as good as a second business centre, but if that's not an option, then I'd welcome this and just make sure it's future-proof. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Baxter. I'm really pleased that you're in favour of this particular agenda item. Mick King and Amanda Bond, do you wish to comment on those questions?
Thank you, chairman. Quite a number of points there. So just briefly, we constantly check for demand in the area. Aventis is currently running at about 95% occupancy with no waiting list. So we're satisfied that in certain current climates, providing the space which businesses locally require. And of course, the works, if they're approved, the scheme is approved, will create around 2,000 square feet of additional space. Landis in Gear was the project or the location to which Amanda referred earlier. We did look at a collaboration there to repurpose some of that building. But as Amanda said, the professional advice was, in the current climate, because of the change to the market because of COVID, it would have been a high revenue risk, which we didn't feel was appropriate to do at this time. The cafe, yeah, it is well-used and we're confident and the tenants is confident that once the staircase is removed, which masks the cafe from a lot of passing trade, the trade there will increase. And the staircase itself, yes, it is a grand statement, I would agree. However, it's also a problem in that it's used extensively by people taking part in illegal car meets and car drives around the estate at weekend evenings. And we have CCTV footage there, it's been used in an appropriate way. And police regularly or occasionally attend to move on those crowds. That problem will be gone. Also, the staircase which leads to reception on the first floor does make the building difficult to manage because there are also entrances on the ground floor. So we feel it'd be a safer way of managing the building once there's only one entrance in the conventional way on the ground floor. Zazzle, we've talked with Zazzle consistently over their time, support them there. They have a right, by virtue of the nature of their lease, to remain there at every lease renewal unless we, as a landlord, have genuinely need to use their offices for our own purposes. And we've talked with them about their thoughts. They do occasionally mention looking at Peterborough, where they have an interest, and London, where they have an interest. And of course, we don't want to lose them from the district or from the county. So we keep supporting them whilst they're here and continue with our other colleagues to look for other opportunities for them if they do want to move on locally. And finally, video conferencing, yes, that's been suggested to us before. And of course, it's the way that a lot of businesses and other organisations work now. We can certainly look into a business case for providing that type of facility and other types of IT such as large-scale plotters, et cetera. We'd need, of course, to consider, members wish to consider things like the payback period and the return on investment, but we could look into those. I think that responds to most of the points raised by councillor Baxter, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Mick. Councillor Griggs, are there any further questions from members? No. There's two actions here, members. The first one is to consider the attached report to determine whether it supports the recommendations to the leader of the council and to the executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning on page two of the report. Two, agree any additional comments to be passed to the leader of the council and the executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning. There's a proposal there which I move that the committee supports the proposal recommendations and agrees to pass on our comments to the leader of the council and the executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning. Kiera, you've captured quite a few of those comments, haven't you? Is there a seconder? Councillor Haig, all those in favour? Thank you very much indeed. Any against? No, thank you, that is moved. We'll move on then to the item six, which is the service level performance reporting against performance framework 2020 to 2021, quarter four. The item is on page 17 to 38 of the agenda pack and sets out the quarter four performance for economy flooding and waste. The report will be presented by Samantha Harrison, head of economic development, David Hickman, head of environment, and Mike Reed, head of waste services, are all in attendance on Teams. Over to you, Samantha, and good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. And I'd just like to introduce the performance measures for the economy area. So we have three measures that focus on businesses supported, adults gaining qualifications and the level of external funding attracted into Lincolnshire. So I'm pleased to say, overall, we've achieved all of our targets set this year. We did have initial concerns about our adult learning target. We've actually swapped to a higher average provision of online learning plus some face-to-face work and we've been able to provide a full range of support and qualifications, for example, looking at construction, manufacturing, customer care, hospitality support across the board. So really pleased with that activity. The other thing I'd like to say is we've also really supported our business community at this current time and we over exceeded our target and supported over 1,800 businesses. And this is intensive support to help them survive and sustain through the current climate. And the final point is, in terms of our funding, we were able to secure some of the get-to-building funding from the government and also some vital business support funding for peer networks, for EU transition support. So I'm pleased to say that it's been, despite all of the economic climate, it has been a positive year for our area. But I'd like now, I can access any questions or I can hand over to my colleague, David Hickman, to update on his area. Thank you.
Samantha, I think we'll wait to the presentation to see if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. If I can continue then, if I can draw members' attention to pages 27 onwards of the agenda pack. We have two measures here for you today with regard to flooding. Both of these, I would emphasise, relate specifically to the county council's own core, some of the county council's own core roles as lead local flood authority. But I would again, I would emphasise that these roles are carried out within the context of a much broader partnership arrangements with colleagues within the Environment Agency, Internal Drainage Board, district councils and water companies. So if I can take the first measure, flooding incidents investigated. This is one that members will become reasonably familiar with. It's one of our key duties as lead local flood authority that whenever there is an incident of flooding, which affects, internally floods a domestic property or significant infrastructure, we are required to investigate that and to publish a report of that investigation. So last, the financial year just completed, there were a total of 59 of these. So last, the financial year just completed, there were a total of 59 of these investigations. That's a reasonably significant number. If I can draw members' attention to the graphs on page 28. The second graph there you will see gives a total over the last few years of the number of incidents investigated within each year. Fifty-nine clearly is nowhere near as much as the 171 that we experienced in the previous financial year, which was a result of the significant storm weather in the second half of 2019. And gave us, well, often overused term, but literally unprecedented amount of rainfall and unprecedented number of flooding incidents across the county. You will see from that that it is quite difficult to average out the number of incidents we tend to experience in a year. It does vary quite significantly. As you'll see, there was relatively dry period preceding the floods of 2019. But in comparison with the broader data set, the 59 or so from this year is reasonably, is a reasonably high number. What you will see from the graph just above that, though, is that the data that we have, together with information anecdotal and statistical from across the country, is that the number of such incidents where we experience surface water flooding across the county does appear to be increasing over time. And members will appreciate, of course, that that does have an impact on the council's resources and on the resources of our partners. So having thrown those words of doom at you, I'll then proceed on to slightly better news, which is the second measure here, number of properties protected from flooding. Up to now, we've had an annual target of 50 properties protected from flooding. We are looking to increase that for next year. And again, I would also emphasise that this is specifically in relation to properties protected through the County Council's Own Capital Programme as a Lead Local Flood Authority. We do also contribute to a much larger number of smaller-scale projects across the county through development fund projects. We are currently running an additional trial of property-level resilience in the current financial year, which will look to protect an additional 30 properties. And obviously, we work very closely with our partners to help protect an even wider range of properties. But what you'll see, what you'll see there is that we've achieved the target for this year, largely through the completion of the flood alleviation scheme at Digby. And we're now moving on to look at future schemes that we can develop on a reasonably long list that we have of potential schemes to undertake. So I will leave it there, if I may, Chairman, and hand on to my colleague, Mike.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. Over to you, Mike.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Chairman. Just looking at the waste data, there are two targets and two measures of the four items in the report. I won't go into specific details about each item because these items are very much interconnected. So I will be talking about them in broad terms. And just looking at the first item of recycling at HWRC's Household Waste Recycling Centres. Due to the unprecedented times we've had in this last 15 months, some of you may, or you're all probably aware that the household waste recycling centres were closed for a period of time and then opened up with a series of restrictions in place. That may have had the consequence of limiting the amount of material that we've taken through the sites. And what we've had presented at the facilities is a lot less than previous years. And that may be just, it could be a consequence of availability and people just not being able to get to sites. Or there may be something a little bit deeper regarding behaviour change. And it could be a consequence of people not spending the same amount of money on items and disposal of items. So it's difficult to predict where we're at or the reasons for the big drop-off in material going through the household waste recycling centres. But the actual overall percentage for recycling is pretty much on the target. It's 74.9%, where the target is 75%. That could be lower than historical years simply because the amount of actual handling of material separated and segregated on site has not been occurring to the usual extent because of the Covid restrictions, which has stopped material being separated and sent for recycling. And more material could have gone for incineration, for example. So that's one factor in that system. Another issue is just looking at the second, the measure of tonnage of mixed dry recycle that Recyclet presented at Curbside. That's an increase. That's gone up from 46,000 tonnes to 51,000 tonnes on the previous. It's increased from 46 to 51,000 tonnes. Now, that again could be a consequence of household waste recycling centres not being open. If people have been, not having as many visits, there could have been more material put in recycling at Curbside. There isn't any actual target for this. So it is a measure. And as of yet, we can't state whether there are behavioural change issues at play or whether it is a consequence of infrastructure which has been available so that people haven't been going out and leaving the properties to actually visit the HWRCs. Looking at the third issue, the household waste recycled, again, that is the overall picture. And it is low. It is around 40%. The target which was set many years ago was 55%. We've struggled to meet that and that is a national issue. So it's not just faced by this authority. But it's very difficult to say that the figures, the trends that we've been facing in this last year are in any way representative of an ongoing trend. So it is tricky to say, and as I've just said, but it's one thing that less waste could be presented, different types of waste could be presented, we just don't know is the bottom line. And ultimately, as a consequence of the household waste recycling centres being closed, more material could have gone into the private sector. And I think we have strong ties with private sector operators who state that their business is facing unprecedented times and they're getting a great deal of demand from the public on actually disposing of waste through that stream. So it's something that we might have a consequence of that. The fourth issue, the measure on green waste composted. This is, this possibly is down to more of a seasonal issue. It's lower than previous, 66,000 tonnes as opposed to 73,000 tonnes on the previous year. Again, it could be that material is not being presented at household waste recycling centres. We could have the same amount of material at the Curbside. But if it's not being presented at HWRCs, then we won't be disposing of it. So it won't show on our data. But it could be something as simple as the season this year not being as good for growing as the season previously. So it's, yeah, the unprecedented times, I think, have made a big impact on the whole service. And I think it's something that if we come back to a normal situation, then I think we will have more opportunity to reflect on the data and possibly look at what we can do in future. But I think, yeah, until we do face a more normal situation, it's going to be really difficult to kind of support these figures with any real confidence or say there are any trends because of certain issues. So that's, yeah, that just kind of finishes my part. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Steve. I thank all officers for their presentations. I would now like to open up to members of the committee to comment on these items. And can you please keep your questions concise? Although we are, you'll be pleased to know ahead of time, we are running on a tight schedule today. So, members, questions, please? Councillor Griggs?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree with the last point Mike made about it being difficult to sort of quantify what is the cause. So it's not a question, it's more of a comment. I appreciate that the tonnage of recycling material collected at the Curbside increased by approximately 12%. And whilst I'm sure it doesn't account for all of it, I would imagine if my household's anything to go by is the fact that most people are sat at home all day, every day, working from home. And some more waste is produced in the house as opposed to in the workplace. I would imagine, in my mind, and I'm happy to be proved incorrect or correct, that that will have a massive impact. So it'll be really interesting to see what happens coming out of Covid when people go back to work to see if that number shrinks again or whether it stays at the new elevated number.
Thank you very much indeed. Any further questions? Councillor Baxter?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I've got a question for each, actually. Based on the continual changes in industry, how can we further encourage education to improve and make it relevant and available to people in Lincolnshire? That's the first question. With David, we now collect near-miss data. Has that enabled us to better direct our resources to areas? And thirdly, obviously, flytipping isn't a problem according to the paper. But how can we encourage the public to get rid of the extra tonnage in an appropriate way? Rather than getting tempted? And just a note that on the bins, when they're tagged and people say, "We're not going to pick them up", where do they expect that tonnage to go? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Skinner. Mike Reed, are you able to answer those questions?
Yes, yes, Chairman. On the issue of flytipping and encouraging people to use the correct avenue for disposal, we are introducing some initiatives to enable people to have groups to be able to pick up PPE and bags and flytipping equipment. It's an initiative we're recently starting. And it's something that we've had a lot of interest in so far. So that's where we're allowing community groups and encouraging community groups. And we're working closely with them to dispose of flytipping, collect it and dispose of it. However, our main ambition would be to prevent that in the first place. I think one of the issues that we're looking at at the moment is education campaigns which needs to go in place with the flytipping initiative. And also, we need to look at a national and regional picture on crime prevention and prime crime punishment. So where people are flytipping, have that more advertised more freely, more openly to demonstrate that there is a consequence of this rather kind of antisocial crime. So that's one thing for the flytipping issue. But in terms of material, what we're doing with material which is tagged at the bins, at the Curbside. We're, just give you an example, we're currently rolling out a separate paper and card collection at Boston. And we have a team who are going around and just essentially trying to talk to members of the public, going through bins, looking at what material is in the bins. And if something is seen to be incorrectly placed in that new bin, then putting tags on where we can't have discussions. But openly talking to people in a positive way, and this is not a punishment. This is trying to educate people at the Curbside. And I've witnessed it myself last week where residents are free and happy to talk about what they're doing wrong. And I think it is part of our education challenge to essentially re-educate people on what they should be doing with the changing in bin collections. And we do it in a partnership way. We're not doing it in an adversarial approach. This is not a confrontation. So where we are rolling out different bins, there will be changes on what should be taken out of a mixed dry recyclet bin, for example, and put in a new paper and card bin. And that's the approach that we're taking. We have a new team set up. We work fairly closely with districts to try and address it at the Curbside and change people's mindsets in a positive way. Because that's going to be ultimately the most positive way of delivering this.
Thank you very much, Steve.
My just comment, Chairman. In fact, Boston Borough, we've had litter champions for well over 12 years now. And I'm absolutely amazed by the local Wombles Group and the amount of positivity they bring to this exercise. The only final thing I would just ask to consider, if there is actually some sort of amnesty for a set period so people can clear their houses of, let's say, the rubbish that's been built up over this lockdown period. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Skinner. I'm sure that those comments will be passed on to the Leader of the Council. Councillor Baxter, you're next.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the people giving the presentations. I'm also grateful for the introduction that we had a few weeks ago, which gave us some time to go into more detail and the conversations I've had with officers since. However, it's a great big topic to get through in a concise question. So working through the different performance indicators, I'd like to ask, with the qualifications, what is meant by a qualification? Are they all equal? So if I get a master's degree, is that a qualification alongside a kind of NVQ1 in botany? Are all qualifications equal? What impact has had the development of the Granttham University? And what impact will that have? And is it going to make any difference? What, how do we measure qualifications achieved in the county? So if my middle daughter, for example, is sneaking into Peterborough to do the training for her apprenticeship, does that get counted as a Lincolnshire qualification or a Peterborough qualification? Moving on to flooding, flooding is up and obviously this is an issue partly of climate change. And I've noticed in parish council meetings, the issue of flooding is appearing more frequently, which is a worry and it's something that we can't, not with all the money in the world, we can't solve the issues of climate change and flooding which are heading our way. And the exceptional year that we had last year is not going to continue to be exceptional, I'm afraid. This is, this is a bigger question than a concise question. On the issue of recycling, frankly, no disrespect to the officers or the previous members, but our performance as a county on recycling is woefully inadequate for the same reasons of climate change. We've had a target of 55% for years and years and years. And at one point, we were over 50%. But when you look at the graph on page, probably about page 30, it shows that year-on-year, with a very slight blip last year, our recycling is still falling while the need to recycle is still growing very quickly. And on top of that, it's not just that we're not recycling as much. We're down now, I think, to 43% compared to 50% almost 10 years ago. Not only is it falling, but our contamination rates are still dreadful. And as Councillor Skinner says, there's got to be a way to educate people about recycling better, about using the recycling bin better. While we've got 30%, 30% of what we put in the silver bins in South East Stephen doesn't get recycled. In fact, it messes up the other recycling. And I know that district and county councillors and officers cannot, at the moment, prevent people from putting used nappies in bins. I went to the recycling waste transfer station in Deeping the other day and they told me that on a regular basis, people are still expecting used nappies to be recycled. And that's a real educational hurdle and it would make a difference to the outcome, to the performance. So I had some questions about the tips, but I'll move on past them. To talk about green waste, and it's been a funny year. So I think lots of people have spent more time in their gardens. Lots of people have spent more time clearing out their garages than would usually be the case for obvious reasons. But green waste sent for recycling is not necessarily the best measure of, it's possibly the easiest to find, but the best measure of green waste recycling. If we all put all our grass in the green waste bin, then that sends the green waste total up. But we shouldn't be putting our grass in the green waste bin. We should be either composting it or mulching it or leaving it on the grass. Similarly, with other waste from our garden. There are other things you can do with garden waste, mostly concerned with composting and mulching, that you should do before you even purchase a green bin. So any thoughts on that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Councillor Baxter? Thank you very much, Steve. Councillor Baxter, I think your first part of your questions, I'm going to ask Samantha to answer, and then your last part about waste, Mike. So Samantha, are you able to answer those questions?
Certainly, certainly. So in terms of the adult education programme, we provide qualification levels across the range. So it could be people who haven't achieved GCSEs whilst they were at school, it can be BTEC courses. And it is across a level three provision. So what we do, so when we report the qualification figures, it is a range. However, it is the lower level qualifications, because part of our programme is that we signpost and provide careers guidance for people to move on, to either take further qualifications with colleges and universities. So you mentioned, you know, the Granttham University proposition, and also we've got developments at Boston College, University of Lincoln and Bishop grotesque. So we put referrals directly into those programmes, and we want to see people on a ladder of progression. So we're catching the people who missed the initial opportunity, or people that have had a worklessness culture, and we're trying to get them to raise their confidence and start that journey of training through our provision. And just to answer a previous comment, in terms of our curriculum and the development and the provision we provide, it's based on what sectors and growth sectors are in Lincolnshire. And we really tailor the support to the tourism sector, manufacturing, construction, digital technology. So we are trying to inspire people to stay within Lincolnshire and to either set up their own business or get employment across the board. So overall, the final question was about how do we count people that have left the county to undertake their training. So we can have access to those figures. We also get a lot of people who come into the county to access our training, because we have a broader provision than elsewhere. And because of the borders, there is quite a blended approach. So our figures actually report what is delivered within the county. But we do know that there is a small percentage, particularly on the fringes, that will access tailored courses closer to home. And we do have access to those figures. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you Samantha. Mike, are you able to answer those questions on waste?
Yes, thank you chairman. Just to respond in broad terms, the issue on recycling is a national issue. We're not sure why it is so much lower. It may be a certain amount of complacency in the public, or there may be confusion. But I think you're certainly right that we do need to increase the education campaigns. It's slightly hindered by district councils having different approaches to their bins that they supply, and what the makeup is of material that they accept. And that is a difficulty for the partnership as a whole. However, one thing I want to just raise on your radar is the fact that in having separate bin collections, so for example, paper and card, that is enabling us to extract at source that material which doesn't then become contaminated. And it's the same with other products. If we provide, the difficulty is going to be bins. But if we can provide enough separate bins for people to separate their material, that material is less likely to be contaminated by other materials such as food waste, which then has to be incinerated. And if we can give people the opportunity to separate at source, we should reduce the amount of contamination we've got coming through our whole waste streams and increase the recycling rates. So that's something which government is very eager to promote going forwards. And there have been some different consultations recently on separate waste collections. The main driver will be food being separated and having a, possibly a weekly collection for food, which may become mandatory. And then the other things which will be paper and card and glass, plastics, et cetera, which it will be difficult in some areas to have the required number of separate bins. But I think that's a problem that we'll have to overcome as the wider partnership. And just referencing your query about green waste, it is, it's a bit of a strange one to report on, because we can't influence how much material people present to us. You're right in that councillor Baxter is right in that ideally, we don't want green waste to be recycled. We'd like it to be dealt with at source. That's better for the environment. We're not having to haul that material around. And this is something that I think we will possibly be looking at in the near future, to say, should we be encouraging more composting and giving provision for that with the public, rather than providing a wider service? And I think, yes, we do like to provide as much infrastructure as possible to allow people to do this. But if we can create a behaviour change whereby people think they don't need to recycle green waste, they can deal with it themselves, it's better for the environment, and it's selling that environmental benefit to residents, that it's not necessarily about just getting rid of it and getting it off the doorstep. It's about dealing with it at source. But again, it is a behavioural change issue. And yeah, we'll have to have a lot of campaigns around education that can enable us to do that. So I hope I've answered the questions there. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. We are in danger of overrunning here, but I've got two more councillors who wish to speak. First one councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Bowles. Councillor Taylor.
Yes, hello. Good morning. Thank you for this presentation. Some very useful information there. I agree with certain comments regarding education and communicating the message. But are we delving down into the details to find out the areas where it's particularly low regarding recycling rates to answer those questions and communicate those issues? Because I know previously it's been in more transient areas, and the message may be to landlords and state agents about how seriously we take this problem. Also regarding when you referred to a collection of food waste, back to education, actually trying to prevent food actually being wasted. So it's also helped the situation there. So let's just keep it brief, but a couple of points there. And so are we working with districts to communicate that message to all possible sources? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Samantha, can you answer that question?
In terms of, so in terms of education, what we are trying to do is support people to undertake and have the green values. And we are, in fact, in terms of food support, we provide direct courses on how to utilise food, how to make healthy meals, how to recycle. So we are doing a broad-based education programme and cascading messages out, and obviously supporting our green agenda that ties in directly with the council's approach to waste. So it links directly into what Mike is doing. But there is a broader education piece needed. And we, you know, we do work in tandem. Mike, is there anything you'd like to add on that?
I was just going to add that we do, obviously, we make up the partnership with our district council partners. We work very closely with them. And I think it's fair to say we've got to work even closer in future, because we've got such interconnected issues that we're going to have to address. But in providing the infrastructure that we need, that addresses essentially the back end of the problem. And we're hoping that a new facility that comes online with Mid UK at Baxton very soon should help us reduce contamination. But that's trying to solve the problem after it's occurred. But I think we're all of a similar minds, that we do need to look at the education and better inform people, rather than just think of the consequence. We need to think of avoiding the situation in the first place. So we do accept the comments. And I think it's something that we will be looking at changing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Now called councillor Bowles.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, it's just a request for some more information, really. So to speed up the meeting, it can be provided outside the meeting, if that helps. It's just on the properties protected from flooding and the scheme that we've obviously set up there. I'm just wondering if somebody could provide me with the details of what would meet the criteria for properties, you know, to be considered under that scheme. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. David, are you able to do that?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, we are. I mean, there are a number of different criteria, actually. The Digby scheme was a capital scheme. And there are, there are, there are a range of criteria that we apply to prioritise specific capital schemes as we go forward. Again, some of the smaller, some of the smaller schemes have slightly different criteria levels, depending on the nature of the funding and the scale of the scheme. So I'll happily speak to the flood team and provide councillor Bowles with that information.
Thank you very much indeed. The actions required today are the committee is invited to consider and comment on details of the performance contained in the report and recommend any changes or actions to the relevant executive council. I think Kiara has captured most of those, or all of those comments. And the proposal is, I move, that we received the report and are satisfied with the performance of course of four. Can you raise your hand if you agree, please? Any abstentions? Any against? Thank you very much, Steve. We're going to move on now to the next item of the agenda, which is the item seven, the impact of Covid-19 on Lincolnshire high streets. I think Vanessa, you're going to lead on this.
Good morning. Thank you, chairman, and thank you, committee.
Good morning.
We've brought the paper this morning to begin a discussion with the committee about our changing high streets. And members will realise that, in particular during the pandemic, some of the changes that we were seeing before have been exacerbated, it's estimated by as much as five years, in terms of that change, particularly around online shopping, and the changes in retail, particularly in the high streets. Members would have seen in the paper a number of areas we wanted to draw to members' attention, particularly the levelling up fund and levelling up agenda that we've been working on, both at district level and at county in recent months. A number of those applications focus on the high street alongside the towns fund projects which are woven into the levelling up agenda. Similarly, community renewal fund, which is that revenue pot, a fairly short but intense funding opportunity to be delivered this financial year. At the same time, officers are beginning to work on thoughts around the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. And although we don't have the detail of that funding scheme yet, we know that is something that's coming forward in the autumn. Also, I wish to highlight two work that's being done across services within growth, to look at publicly owned buildings, and how they could perhaps be reused in terms of providing hub space, particularly with that digital focus for businesses, where people might want to drop in, meet, perhaps use it for, whether it's a space for a morning or for a whole day. Clearly links to the first paper that you received from Mick King and Amanda this morning, thinking about how our workforce is changing and needing that flexibility. So in summary, the paper seeks to bring some of those issues to your attention, but also seeks the views of members in terms of how the changes are affecting their local towns, or the city indeed, and how businesses are changing as well. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Vanessa. I'm now going to open up to members of the committee for questions. Councillor Griggs, do we have any questions? Councillor Bowles.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. From my experience of speaking to businesses, shop owners and things like that in Gainsborough, one of the major problems we face is absent landlords for properties, you know, and the disinterest in the town and willing to work with people. I know Wes Lindsay, you know, worked very hard on that. But I'm just wondering if what county council can do in that direction. Because again, I'm aware that one of probably the biggest property holders engaged with Town Centre, you know, is a big partner of the county councils through the LEAP. You know, so what pressure can be put on there to, you know, bring these people to the table, look after the properties, encourage them to get them filled? You know, we have two parts of Gainsborough. You've got Marshalls Yard that has a dedicated team marketing pushing it. If a shop leaves there, it's filled, another retailer comes in. The Town Centre, we've got shops that have been empty 10, 15, 20 years because the owners of those shops, you try and contact them, you're given a, you know, a postal address for somewhere in Hong Kong, they're just private investment companies. So I'm interested in what the county council can do to try and bring these people to the table a bit more.
Thank you very much, Steve. I'm going to go next to Tom Ashton, because we are running out of time on this item. And then we'll answer all your questions together. Tom.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I feel very much to me that our towns need to be destination, not as much for tourists, which will always be the case, but destination where local people want to go. And I believe there's an awful lot to be said for repurposing properties and premises in town centres, particularly above shop space, which in many of our towns is significantly underutilised. I appreciate district councils have a role to play in some of this, particularly around housing and planning. Although, as usual, ability and freedom to action is sometimes restrained by cost and national legislation. Where I think there's possibly something with the county council is just to continue promoting that close partnership between county and district councils and borough councils, in order to make our towns as attractive as possible in the public realm and the public sphere, where we have control as a county council over highway spaces, marketplaces, and that sort of thing. And just to continue that spirit of cooperation. I mean, just off the top of my head, in Boston, something that would make the visitor experience and the local resident experience so much better is if you could walk through the middle of town without having a bus bleeping at you to get out of the way coming one way, and then another one bleeping its way going the other, emitting diesel fumes right the way through that pedestrian area. So in things like that, if we can take a proactive and collaborative approach with our local partners, I'm sure there's a lot of good work to be done.
Thank you very much indeed. Vanessa, are you able to answer councillor Ashton's and councillor Bowles's questions together?
Indeed. Thank you, chairman. Certainly in terms of the Wes Lindsay point, I think a lot of those issues are at the heart of the levelling up fund scheme that we supported Wes Lindsay with, that's been developed, certainly in terms of focusing on the marketplace and creating a space that people would want to spend time in, and to get people out of Marshalls Yard, or both go to Marshalls Yard and the marketplace, and of course, through to the river as well, seeking out those landlords to repurpose the buildings. I'll certainly revisit that with Wes Lindsay in particular, make sure we have those conversations about Gainsborough, and see what more we can do. And happy to report back on that. In terms of councillor Ashton's point, I would absolutely agree. And although I maybe reflect that if we create spaces that visitors want to go to, perhaps there are also spaces that local people want to spend time in. The issue about repurposing the buildings for people to live in is something that we're seeing an increased trend for. Again, we've seen it in a number of the levelling up fund bids, about creating residences in some of those buildings. And the air quality issues and transport are also noted. So again, happy to talk to councillor Ashton about those specifics, if you would like me to.
Thank you very much indeed, very much Steve, Vanessa. Councillor Baxter, you wish to ask a question? We've run out of time nearly. Is it a quick one question, so we can proceed?
Well, thank you, chair. The agenda says that the questions for consideration are, what is the experience of members of their local towns following the pandemic? Are we not addressing the agenda?
We are indeed. Go ahead.
Okay. So obviously, the way that people do shopping has changed. People travel to a supermarket, and generally, they often stay in that supermarket and then go straight home, because the supermarkets are on the edge of town. For me, driving into the centre of a town other than Market Deeping is often difficult because of parking. And that is something that we, the county council, are, we do have some control over. And whether that's more parking enforcement, or less, or more parking restrictions, or fewer, I don't know. But certainly, that's a place where we have got some influence. And I'd echo the comments of the previous councillor, to say that the district and the county need to work out county need to work out who's in control. I don't know how this agenda relates to the Future High Streets Fund for Grantham, that the District Council is spending a lot of time over, and whether, I'd certainly hope that we're not replicating any research that we do. Certainly in the deepings, we have an economy that is dominated by coffee shops, hairdressers, estate agents, and I think most other towns also have betting shops and charity shops. Those sectors can't keep a Town Centre economy alive on their own, and so trying to get people into the town centre without needing to struggle over parking, which might mean they don't go in the car, or that they've got somewhere to park, I think that's the dilemma that we have to address. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Before we close, Vanessa, would you like to comment on that?
I just commented that it's a very relevant discussion. One of the other pieces of work that we're doing at the moment is preparing a new local transport plan for Lincolnshire, very much thinking about that kind of movement issue in terms of how places work, and that constant challenge of people want to be able to kind of access a place really easily, but probably when they're there, they don't want other people's cars around them. And I think it is a really difficult challenge that we're trying to address, and I'm sure we'll be coming back to Committee with the local transport plan in the autumn, and perhaps there'll be more in that for discussion as well.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Griggs, any further members' questions? The actions required today are the committee is invited to consider and comment on the details of this report, to consider the questions in the paper and recommend any changes or actions to the relevant executive officer, councillor, sorry. And the proposal is that I move that we endorse the report and request our comments, which have taken and captured by Kiara, are recorded and taken into account. Can I ask if you raise your hand if you agree with those proposals? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on now to item eight, which is the Lincolnshire Urban Survey, and that's been led by Ian George. Ian, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, and thank you very much for that welcome. Next slide. Thank you. This paper comes about as a result of an invitation from the previous Chair of this Committee as this project hit its midpoint. Next slide, please. Since the 1990s, Historic England has been undertaking a number of historic characterisation projects in partnership with local councils and local authorities such as ourselves. And these projects have considered both urban and rural landscapes. Next slide, please. This project has been set up to investigate the historic towns of our county, Greater Lincolnshire, and its intention is to identify the time depth that exists in each of our towns, and to demonstrate how the evolution of a town through its history can be read in the buildings, the street layouts and the public spaces as we experience the town centres today. Next slide, please. So this project investigates thirty towns across the historic county, and we're looking at the whole town, not just the obvious historic centre, but the entirety of every town on the list of thirty. Next slide, please. This is part of a national programme, as I mentioned earlier, which has been running since the 1990s, and this map indicates the progress across the country to date, sort of going from west to east, as it turns out. But as you can see, we're towards the end of this project. This map indicates where the towns are distributed across the county. And the next slide, please, Kiara. And this is the full list of the thirty towns that we'll be working on. And as you can see, we're working in partnership with North Lincolnshire Council and North East Lincolnshire Council to consider all the towns we consider the historic towns of the historic county of Lincolnshire. Next slide, please. As the government considers changes to the planning system, and they are looking increasingly at things such as design codes, we feel the work this project is doing is becoming more and more relevant as we look at the threat to the brick and mortar retailing, as we've just heard in Vanessa's paper earlier, and the faces, the challenges that the high streets face in the face of competition from online retailing, so our high streets face greater challenges. The pandemic obviously has increased the speed of these changes, and this project, we feel, is well placed to help us engage with some of the issues that these challenges have brought to us. The most important thing is that you hear about the progress of the project, and now I'll hand over to Nicola for that item.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm going to give you a bit of background about how it's being done and how far we are through it, but I'll be very quick. So next slide, please. So the project is a Historic England and LCC project. We're looking at how towns have developed, their archaeological history and their present day character. So the physical outputs for the project are a report for each town and a digital map dataset, an improved historic environment record, which is a second service in the council, which is ongoing, and increased public awareness and appreciation of the heritage of our towns. The work is also anticipated to be really useful for planners and economic redevelopment. There'll be a couple of clicks, so next slide as well. Thank you. Here is an example of some of the outreach that we're doing. We are working with local schools, as well as, that's actually a market in Wes Lindsay, and kind of local heritage groups as well. So we're trying to get it out to local people, to canvass local opinion. Next slide, please. So how's it being done? We're pulling together as many resources as possible. This includes things like the Doomsday Survey, historic mapping, charters, all sorts of things to create a synthesis of everything that we know about the history of a town. This then generates the first half of the report and contributes to the mapping. Next slide, please. So this is an example of one of the maps that we produce. We're using historical maps and the research, and this is made up of hundreds of tiny areas which all contain information on the time depth of each town. Next slide, please. So this is an example from market deeping. Here you have the medieval town plan form, you have a nineteenth century distillery and then twenty-first century housing. So if you give it four clicks, please, Kiara. So that's how the town has, how that little tiny area has developed. So we go through that history and look exactly why it's developed and how it's developed. And in that way, we can understand why a town looks the way it does. Next slide, please. So all of these little areas then are like building blocks that create larger maps covering the entire town. Next slide. And these show exactly how it's developed. So is it around a market centre? Is it a kind of a resort like Woodhull Spa? Was there industry along the river? Why does it look the way it does today? So what character can you pull out of those maps? Next slide, please. So we then use these building blocks to discuss the present day character of the town, and we have its time depth to analyse where it came from and why it looks the way it does. So this is the second half of the report, the character assessment. We divide it into all these different character areas and dissect them one by one. Next slide, please. This is an example of the assessment. We go through the key characteristics such as, you know, is it a residential area? Is it a commercial area? What are the building types? How does it look? Is it two stories or single story? That kind of thing. What kind of landscape history do you have? And examples of value from a heritage perspective? That includes kind of communal value to the community, how it looks, and how much kind of evidence there is in terms of kind of heritage value. Next click, and again, please. So where are we in the project? We are halfway through in terms of towns done, although we have focused on the larger towns in the first half of the project. This includes Boston, Grantham, Scunthorpe, Plethorpe, quite a few of the larger towns have already been ticked off. We are now going to be focusing on the much smaller towns, such as Curtin and Lindsay, Brig, although we've done Brig, sorry, Barton upon Humber, that those kind of towns. And the project is set to be finished next September. So although the EUS is kind of, it addresses the lack of knowledge in our kind of local town history, it's also a really great planning tool, and we've managed to connect with the planning system on multiple different levels, including neighbourhood plans. We've actually got it involved with the Market Deeping Neighbourhood Plan and also the Woodhull Spa Neighbourhood Plan, among others. It's also being included in local plans as well, and hopefully it will help Lincolnshire acknowledge and preserve its incredibly varied history and sense of place. Next slide, please. So if you would like to know more, there is the website up there, linkspat.town. You can also follow us on Twitter at Urban Survey. And if you'd like a newsletter, please send me an email and I will add you to the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicola. Thank you, Ian. I mean, Lincolnshire's a very varied and important county. I'm myself, I'm from Kent, and I'm passionate about Kent, but I'm also passionate about Lincolnshire. One of the first things that struck me was the variety of the countryside, particularly going up to the Wolds. So it's really super county, and I would encourage anybody to visit Lincolnshire when they can. I'm now going to open up to questions. Councillor Griggs.
Yeah, no one's indicated so far. Just wanted to say that was really, really interesting, to see the development of how towns have moved. Hopefully, we get some really good outcomes, and I'm pleased that the work you're doing is seeming more and more relevant as time goes on. It's always nice when that happens, but I find that happens very rarely in local government. So, but thank you very much for your report.
Sorry, councillor Ashton.
On an entirely personal level, this looks absolutely marvellous. I could spend hours upon hours upon hours looking through those maps, because I have a personal passion for old maps and looking at that. But just to welcome this, genuinely welcome this, because I have walk-on parks in other areas to do with planning, and I think this will be a magnificent tool for that, as well as promoting tourism and the history and heritage of areas. I'm assuming you're working closely with the town councils, and they're all aware of it, but are you including the parishes around town just to promote what you're doing to England? Because there's an awful lot of people have an affinity to their local town that don't live in it and would be as fascinated as I think I am just to follow the process and look at the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much. Yes, we are trying to kind of broadcast as much as possible. So we have worked with quite a few parish councils, we have sent out emails to parish clerks to kind of try to disseminate the work. We've also worked with town councils, including Skegness Town Council, that was a recent town that we've completed. And we're also on things like social media and just trying to broadcast it as much as possible. At the beginning of the project, we did go around all of the district councils and spoke to everybody individually, and we've also been involved with the Development Managers Officers Group for their kind of planning teams as well, to try and get everybody involved. So yes, we are trying to get it to as many different councils as possible, into as many different levels as possible as well. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further question? Councillor Taylor and Councillor Skinner next.
Thank you very much. Very interesting report there, very interesting to hear the developments of this. You spoke about the end date. So have you considered a exhibition or a launch, grand launch in certain villages or certain towns or communities when it's concluded to add interest to it, including inviting local media and all those that could show some interest? Thank you.
For each town, we are trying to actually have a presentation on the work that's going on. At first, this was quite a large kind of outreach project. The coronavirus pandemic has put a bit of a stop to that, and that's kind of forced us to reel in, to reel that in somewhat. We are hoping to get back out to heritage groups, civic societies, town councils to provide presentations to each of those groups. At the end of the project, it would be fantastic to have a launch party. That's something that haven't really, we haven't thought of yet. Please go. Yeah.
Well, if I could just add that as we've continued through this project, I think Historic England has seen, who are fully funding this project, it's a hundred percent funded by Historic England, but I think they've started to see the value of the information we're gaining in a way that I think you have, councillor, and so they have started to talk about whether we might be able to publish it or get it out there in a more public way than we've done so far, because of the limits of the funding that they've given us so far. But so there is potential for that, absolutely, and we're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I thoroughly look forward to the output of this, but just to make you feel welcome, Chairman, I think if you look into the history, Aveline Barford had links with Kent, so that makes it altogether for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Welcome, councillor Alison Austin. Hope you're well today. Is this a question, a subject you want to ask a question on? No, right. The actions of this committee are, is invited to consider and comment on the detail of this report, to note the progress of this project and recommend any changes or actions to the relevant executive councillor. I move that we note the progress highlighted in the report and require our comments, as recorded, being taken into account, which has been captured by Kiara. Are we all agreed? Please raise your hand if you agree. Thank you. That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on then to item nine, Tourism Commission update. Mary, are you there?
I am. Morning, Chairman, thank you. I thought that you might appreciate an update on where we are with delivering the Tourism Commission recommendations. These are based on four themes of skills, investment, product development and marketing. We've had a, we've done a complete redevelopment of the Visit Lincolnshire website. It's, you know, the latest digital offer. It both inspires and informs. Everything leads from it and to it. We launched phase one in mid-March, and we're now working on phase two, which is increasing the amount of content on it, and particularly the accommodation. Cycle Lincolnshire went live at the beginning of this week and looks very good. The overall number of users engaged with the website has doubled versus 2019. People are spending twice as long on the website and viewing three times more content, and the bounce rate is dropping to a quarter of the 2019 rate. Early days, but conversion rates are strong. I'd be interested to know that there's more women than men looking at the website, but apparently men spend longer on the website. I'm sure there's a good joke in there somewhere, but I can't quite move swiftly on. PR, we are improving and streamlining our PR arrangements. We have a marketing campaign that began in June. We're initially focusing on the outdoors, walking, cycling, family-focused and sort of generic advertising, but we'll move on to, so for example, when the Boatshed Cafe at Hutoff opens, we'll move on to a natural coast theme, using the cafe as the hook. We're creating a library of video that will be available to all, so businesses can use it in their, in their own social media. We're working on a green tourism toolkit. I think that's going to be an increasingly important areas that visitors are going to want to know how green, where they're staying is. We're working with Team Lincolnshire on the creation of investor propositions for the visitor economy, and we're working on investment in digital training and skills. We've done some early research. We do have some excellent businesses who are very clued up, but we have some that are quite complacent on their, on their digital skills, and some that are quite a largest proportion, who are really quite poor. We decided that no one size fits all approach, and got a number of initiatives that we're working on, but chief of which will be a business area within the Visit Lincolnshire websites, which will feature worksheet sheets that people can download, video masterclasses, varying ways for, that work for different people to use. We're working on product development, and I've got six themes that I'm majoring on in this sort of first eighteen months. Cycle Lincolnshire, walking, the staying visitor, so very much converting day trippers to staying visitors, the natural coast, that kind of bored teenager market. We think there are a lot of new businesses that are catering for that market, but I think we can do better on that. And business tourism. I think that the business tourism marketplace has changed quite dramatically of recent years, and it isn't just about big conferences, you know, big exhibitions. It's now much more niche, much more product launches, team building, quirky venues and experiences, learning new skills, and I think those are things that actually Lincolnshire could benefit from greatly, and it kind of fits our offer. it kind of fits our offer. So we think there's some work that we can do there. I'm afraid that's probably a bit of a whistle-stop tour, chairman, through the work that we're doing. We're only four months into delivering the recommendations and, you know, as the months go on, we will have delivered more on all these elements, which I'd love to report further on to you. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Mary. I now like to invite members of the committee to comment on this item. councillor Griggs, do we have any speakers? councillor Griggs.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was just wondering, you said more people are using the site and staying longer on it and it sounded really good, yeah, there's twice as many people. Do we have any quantifiable figures on what they are? Because whilst, that is good news, if it's gone from two to four people using and they're staying two minutes instead of one minute, that doesn't really tell us that it's working very well. So if you could quantify those figures, that'd be great.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Griggs. Mary, can you answer that question? We can't hear you, Mary.
Sorry about that. I don't actually have the figures with me. We're working on the first quarter, which finished at the end of June and I will be able to supply those figures. It's roughly about 10,000 a month visiting, visiting the website, but it's going up all the time quite dramatically, particularly since our advertising campaign began in June. But very happy to supply those after the meeting if that's okay.
Thank you very much indeed. Any further questions councillor Griggs? No. The actions required today are the committee is invited to receive, consider and comment on the details of this report. I move that we receive this report and request to receive regular updates on the progress of delivery of the recommendations. Are we all agreed? Please so raise your hand. That's carried, thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item 10, which is the Household Waste Recycling Centre operation. Before we go into the officer's presentation, I have received an email, as I'm sure you all have, from one of the contractors, Mr Carl Drury, our household waste recycling centre facilities. I have passed this correspondence on to councillor Danny McNally for his consideration and I will be consulting with councillor McNally on this before he makes his decision. I'm now going to go to officer Mike Reed for the presentation. Mike.
Thank you, chairman. This supports, this is a further update on a previous report on the Household Waste Recycling Centre operation, which came to committee in June and is a step forward into asking the question as to whether we can stop with using the booking system which has been operating during the pandemic. Just to give you a very quick update, why the booking system came into play was that due to social distancing guidelines, it was felt that having unfettered access to a household waste site would be a risk to the public and staff on site and therefore a booking system was introduced which would limit the numbers and space out the number of visits throughout the day to create a more even visitor offer. This situation, as we've had this system in play for over 12 months now, I think it's worked well, it's provided us, it's enabled us to operate safely in the environment with what we've had. However, it feels now that we should be looking, and once social distancing guidelines are relaxed, I think there is a very strong case for opening up and reverting the system based on the previous model where residents didn't have the online system and could essentially to the household waste sites and have free access. We have had many complaints regarding the booking system and some members of the public have been quite vociferous in stating that they don't agree with it, they don't want to do it and they've asked for it to be scrapped. And I think that there is arguments on both sides to keep the booking system or dispense with it. However, one thing that I think that we need to be mindful of is that at the moment, we are not getting the maximum efficiency from these facilities. We have 11 facilities around the county and they're not being used as much as we previously thought that we would be using them, having the numbers through the gates. And I think at the moment, we have lots of complaints from residents that they can't book on their required slot. There seem to be peak periods which are just preventing other people from having that access. So with the caveat that social distancing will cease, we're putting forward a proposal that the booking system be stopped from a nominal date of the 1st of September to allow easier access to members of the public and also to enable the site to be better used. I think at the moment, we have around 12 to 15% of bookings which don't actually appear, so people make the bookings and then don't actually turn up, which is a big problem. And also the IT system, which is called Jadoo, is creaking in that it struggles to cope with the numbers that we would like to open the household waste sites up with. So in wanting to increase the number of slots available to the public, the IT system won't cope with that and that will need considerable development to allow us to put through the numbers that we'd like to put through. So that's essentially what we're trying to do. I think there are three options that we've considered. Firstly, it's obviously to stop the booking system. Secondly, it's to keep the booking system, which is for consideration, but also there's a combined approach where we could have a booking system at certain sites. I think that the third combined approach is unwieldy in that we would still have to be having people working, applying the system, officers' time which would have to be spent and also we don't see the great benefit from having that combination. So it's something that I think there are measures which we can keep from this last 12 months. We've gained a lot of experience of looking at the demographic of people that are using the site and one of the issues that has been obvious is that we may have deterred a lot of trade users, commercial users who shouldn't be using these facilities and that will be as a consequence of, possibly will be as a consequence of a register system for vans and trailers. And historically, we believe that trades and businesses were abusing the site, which they shouldn't have been using the site, but they were abusing the site and essentially disposing of waste at council taxpayers' expense. So by having this system of pre-registration for vans and trailers and permits applied, that we think has deterred trade and businesses from using the facilities. So that is something that we will look to keep. However, just in encouraging more use and having the accessibility, I think it's fair to say that we very much want to dispense with the booking system and open the facilities up to the public because there may be expectation that these things, it was a temporary measure and once we have this Freedom Day, then the public have this expectation that the sites will be more accessible. So that's essentially, yeah, where I'd like to finish this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Mike. Members of the committee, this is a pre-decision item on the operation of household waste recycling centres. The views of the committee will be reported to councillor Danny McNally, Executive Councillor for Waste Trading Standards, who will consider a decision between the 19th of July 2021 and the 23rd of July 2021. I would now like to invite members of the committee to comment on this item. councillor Griggs, do we have any speakers? I've got councillor Taylor first. Thank you very much indeed, councillor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. It's good to see councillor McNally here to hear these comments today. As you know, this was introduced as a temporary measure. I understand why that was introduced and it did serve the benefit for certain people, those with time and flexible diaries that could plan their trips to the tip. However, for many people with busy lives or maybe not so organised as others, this was not as possible and very concerned about the no-shows, that 12 to 15% is a serious problem. Those who made the efforts to make a booking have not turned up. That is a concern, particularly because of the cost of this system and agree with some of the comments we heard in the presentation. If we can now remove the booking system, but keep the best aspects of this, of course crack down on any abuse which has taken place and advertise the fact this is only available to Lincolnshire residents and maybe some spot checks on addresses occasionally to check on if people are attended from different parts of the country that are not Lincolnshire residents. So I do support that. And also regarding the number of complaints, the report said 282. Of course, as official complaints, we all know there were further comments on social media, many comments to councillors and of course candidates during the recent elections. So there was clearly more than that number of people who had some complaints or concerns regarding that system. So I do support removing those, that booking system. Just one question if I can ask at this stage. The report mentions the Equality Act of 2010, so with the removal of the booking system, are we again taking, reverting back to a system where staff on the site can offer some physical support to those vulnerable residents who are not always able to unload their vehicles? So are we going to return to that system? Because there's been a gap there where we know that certain residents can drive to a site, but they've been unable to unload their vehicle and the staff on site have been instructed not to support them. So if we can return to system where we can support all our residents, I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor. That's a good question. Mike, can you answer that question please?
Yes, certainly, chairman. We have been in discussions with our contractors and we have given them the ability to, once obviously subject to social distancing being stopped, to provide assistance to members of the public on a discretionary basis. And I think it will be down to their judgment who they help, but they are under strict instructions that they should be helping the, prioritising the elderly and infirm where they can. Obviously, it may not be possible to help everyone because the numbers of residents on site could be very high at times and we have limited numbers of staff on site, but we have, they have been told and they agreed, they have agreed to provide more of a priority for those who may find it more difficult to dispose of waste. Thank you.
Thank you, that's good to hear. Do you want to come back at all councillor Taylor? Thank you. councillor Alison Austin, you've made a request to ask a question, although not member of the committee. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, chairman. Right, so you may wonder why am I here? But my question is this, why are the people of Boston in general so unhappy with the booking system and the perceived limited opening hours at the new household waste recycling centre? Moreover, could this be possibly one cause of the apparent plague of fly tipping in and around the town? Please don't forget however, that Boston is the second largest centre of population in the county. So why is Boston seemingly so different from much of the county whilst we actually in our household are very happy with the new arrangements? And has been touched on now, I think, by a couple of speakers that I believe this comes down to demographics. Boston is known as having a low wage economy and many of the population work extremely long hours. If you are starting a shift at 6am or even 4am and work through until 4pm, when are you going to take your rubbish to the tip? Moreover, how do you manage if your two rest days always coincide with the two days that the facility is closed each week? Most families have to run a car, okay, because it's the only way of getting to work at these hours and there's a serious lack of public transport. However, let's be realistic, if it's a day when the tip is closed, who then is going to drive 20 miles to and 20 miles back again just to get rid of their rubbish at a neighbouring facility on their actual day off work? Now, other consequences that you may not have thought of over a low wage economy include living in more crowded accommodation with lack of storage space outside or indoors or buying cheaper goods that don't last so long and compounding the consequences of what's become anyway a throwaway society, hasn't it, in this modern world? In the more affluent parts of this county, people have choice. They can afford to pay someone to remove their unwanted items or have sufficient space in their gardens to store green waste and dispose of it when it's convenient. Then we've got the issue of the fact that the household car for many families is a van or the car is too small to put rubbish in it or the trailer is too large and their waste is being perceived as being commercial waste. Now, you as a committee are going to make recommendations, but remember that you have choice. Not all residents have that luxury. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Alison Austin. My own personal comments are that since the recycling centres, hours have changed. We have noticed in South Castings a real vast increase in fly tipping in that area and so I would welcome going back to a non-booking system myself. I'm now going to open up two questions, councillor Griggs, councillor Baxter.
Thank you, chair. My barber is a woman band. He is closed two days a week and when I forget that he's closed on a Monday, it's a nuisance. He's only got one, one and a half members of staff. This is a commercial operation worth millions, the contract is worth millions. I don't understand why the tips are closed two days a week. They are closed two days a week, aren't they? Somebody agree with me? Yeah.
Yes.
So if supermarkets and so many other things are open seven days a week and we haven't got any religious objection, obviously, to working Sundays because they're already open Sundays, I don't understand why they're closed seven, they're closed for two days in the week. Personally, I prefer the hybrid. I've been to the tips before and after the Covid restrictions and going recently, it's been a lot less frantic. Having a specific time to arrive means that you don't put off going to the tip, but you do look forward to going to the tip and make better use of your journey. So for people who are organised or want to be organised, the click and tip is quite good in terms of managing my waste. And I also respect other people might need a tip in a less organised fashion, that's what life is like. So I definitely prefer the hybrid and I think we've got room for it because we're shut two days a week. Those two days a week could be the tip without an appointment days and the rest of the time could be click and tip. And sorry to use the word tip, I do of course mean recycle. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any further questions before I move on to Mike to answer those questions?
Yeah, I've got me next, then councillor Hayes, councillor Bowles and councillor Ashton on the list.
I think then I'll go back to Mike to answer councillor Alison Austin and councillor Baxter's questions before we move on.
Thank you, chairman. I think in response to councillor Austin, areas are very different, demographics of people are very different and we recognise that. However, I don't, I don't see how we can change that. I think we've got to reflect what the public want and therefore, yeah, we do, we do try to encourage people to use the facilities in whatever model we're using. However, ultimately it comes down to the individuals having to abide by whatever system we have in place, but we do, we realise that there are different areas with different types of demographics. So it's ultimately, we do, we want to have a policy which is reflected of the whole county so that there is less confusion, but ultimately it's down to individual choice and accessibility. And I think one thing that hark back to with my presentation is that if we can make the sites more accessible to the public, then the issues faced by residents in Boston may not occur and we could have reduced some of that stress and pressure, particularly in that area. Coming back to councillor Baxter's question about... Coming back to councillor Baxter's question about whether or not we could open seven days, he is correct in that sites are closed two days a week. There are various issues around that in that firstly, for staff to be provided to work seven days a week will be a considerable cost. It's, it's not just a case of introducing two more staff on, on top of five staff, for example, that because of the working week and the legislation about the, the hours that, that can be worked by, by members of the public, the, the staff burden will be considerable. And also the, the facilities would need to be managed, so not only on, on our side, from the officer's side, but also from the contractor's side. If they are working seven days a week, that will be a considerable financial burden and, and pressure which, which I don't think we could realistically meet. A second issue is that the sites need maintenance, they do need to be cleaned, they need to be repaired and that, that two week, that, that two day gap does give us an opportunity to address some of the problems which can occur, which will be difficult to address if the sites were open to the public. And, and thirdly, the, the haulage of containers is, a lot of this occurs on the two day closure. So containers could be filled up on a, an afternoon and if, if there's then a two day gap, it enables the haulier to, to access the sites unfettered and, and just not hindering the public and it enables a lot of the, the containers to be emptied and replaced. So a lot of the, the work takes place in that two day period from, from Biffa who are our haulage contractor. And so there is a big financial consequence to opening seven days a week. And, and obviously we would need the resources and finance to be able to do that on already stretched budgets. I, I don't see it's, it's realistic. So it, it would be difficult, but I think it, you know, we've got to be mindful that the sites do need to be maintained and, and improved, even if we, we would like to open seven days and have the budget to do that. So I think I've answered the question for councillor Baxter there. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed Mike. Councillor Greig, you're, you're next.
Thank you very much. Councillor Austin raised quite a few of the points I was going to, so I don't intend to reiterate them too much. Mike said in one of the earlier agenda items and repeating himself just now about people unable to access. And councillor Austin raised a point about what if you're two days off, are the two days that is closed? And me and councillor Austin had a discussion about this previously. And, and I appreciate that we can't potentially go back to seven days a week opening, but what about staggering the two days? So instead of being closed Tuesday and Wednesday, be closed Tuesday and Thursday or, so that it's not two days next to each other, because generally speaking, most people who work have days off next to each other. The 15 minute appointments, whilst I had no issue with them, I think where it's worked well, it's worked really well and where it hasn't is failed spectacularly. And unfortunately, we all know a negative experience tars the entire process for you ongoing. I, I liked what councillor Taylor said about the spot checks on ID. And originally I agreed with the continued booking system for vans and trailers. And then I've talked to fellow councillors and neighbours of mine who have a large trailer that's currently covered in rubbish because they're not allowed to take it because it's too big, despite the fact it didn't used to be. And other people who have vans. The issue I've got is that surely it's discrimination if you have a family car that is a van, and I know people who do, that they then can't go to the tip regularly. And I think the spot checks from councillor Taylor would be a fantastic idea to implement. And realistically, we, we've all been to a tip or at least I'm assuming so, or most of us have. And the staff there are really good and they're really helpful and they pay attention to who's coming on and off site. If you've got a big red van using the site for a full load every single day, surely it's incumbent on them to challenge that and say, why do you have so much waste? And therefore removing the system of booking in for vans and trailers, I think would make far more sense. One final thought, is I completely appreciate that budgets are what they are and, and they're constrained. But in every meeting I sit on, in every committee on, on both Borough and County, we talk about the value of a Lincolnshire pound. Now, fly tipping in Boston has tripled over the pandemic. Now, some of that is down to people generally are lazy and, and some people will fly tip regardless of what we do. For some of it, I, I completely believe that is that we've made it too difficult for people to dispose of their rubbish. And that cost has to be met, using a Lincolnshire pound, whether it's a Boston Borough pound, whether it's an East Lindsay pound, whether it's a Lincolnshire County Council pound. Surely it's incumbent on us to provide a facility that people are able to access and, and use whenever they please. So whilst I have no problem with the, with implementing a hybrid system, I think that that would confuse the issue somewhat and it would be best just to scrap the booking system in its entirety, introduce spot checks and allow vans and trailers to attend without permits. Thank you very much Mr Chairman.
Yeah, thank you councillor Greig. I, I fully agree with the idea of a spot check. I'm sure Kieran has captured that down into full report. Councillor Hayes, you're next.
Thank you Chairman. I'm afraid I'm the one dissenting voice here today. I actually like the booking system. I think where the booking system currently fails is that when I go on site at the present time, when I try and book at the present time, I'm only left with certain times during the day that I can go to, to the recycling centre. If those, if those restrictions were removed and you then went online, made the booking and the date and/or the time was not required, you would, you would still be able to keep control of vans and cars coming onto the site. So I really don't see why that can't be made that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Hayes. I'm going to go to Mike Reed, see if he's got any comments on, on both the councillors' questions and comments. Mike?
Yes, just, just to address the, the latter question from councillor Hague. I don't really, sorry, I, I didn't understand what, what the, what the point was there because if, if there's a booking without a, a date and time required, then essentially I don't see it as a booking and, and ultimately you could have people going online to make a booking and then, and then just turn up as and when, as and when they, they chose. So I apologise if I misread that or misheard that, that question. So if, if you want to reiterate that, I, I'm happily respond. But I think one thing, just, just generally, just one thing that we are looking at is providing controls on vans and trailers, not to deter them and giving access to members of the public whilst realising that commercial users, if we don't provide any control, will abuse the system. And what we want to do is make a, a one-time registration of vans and trailers, which could be renewed every year, which is, it's not a difficult situation, I believe. I don't think that's, it's too onerous to, to ask that. And then residents are given so many, so many visits throughout the year, then where they can dispose of material as and when they chose. And I think that, that seems a, a halfway house, which is a reasonable approach to us because if we don't have some kind of control on vans and trailers, we suspect that we could face massive abuse. And as, as much as we say that we would like to enable contractors to address this on site, that could be a significant burden that could just escalate into confrontation if we get a sudden influx of vans and trailers from tradespeople. So we're like, we're, we're looking at deterring that in the first place and then freeing up staff to be more helpful to law-abiding residents who are actually going to site so that they're not having to police the gates and, and be continually looking out for every van and trailer that, that comes through the gates. I think we've got a certain amount of confidence that if we do have a, a pre-registration system, it, it will be quite, quite a gutsy tradesman or, or business who, who would try and pre-register, give their details and then try and access the site as well. And just one thing I want to add on this is that we're also looking to introduce a, a stronger enforcement policy whereby if we do see suspected tradespeople, we can challenge them, get the contractors to challenge them and pass through the information so that we can then follow it up and, and there becomes a, an evidence base of, of where this, where this resident is from, where this business, potential business is from, what they're doing. And then we can investigate and, and look at further action to be taken. So it's, it's a series of, of measures that we would look to kind of keep in place and introduce without making it too onerous for residents because we, we want residents to have free access to this. They're taxpayers and, and it's the, the kind of, the trades abusers that we are trying to deter. And it, it, it feels from our perspective and it, it, you know, people that we've spoken to, that they, they would like this and it's, it's, it's a good compromise in a way that we can do this, bring this in place with confidence that we're not going to impact residents too heavily. So I, I hope I've answered the questions there. If, if councillor Hayes wants to, to kind of ask the question again, I apologise if I misheard the question. Thank you.
So Mike, councillor Hayes, do you still come back?
Just briefly, thank you Chairman. My point was that to, by having a registration and a booking system for vehicles coming in to the recycling centres, if the times were removed from that, so they just booked a day to come in, then that would allow the freedom, but it would also keep control of vehicles coming in from outside Lincolnshire, certainly as far as Sleaford recycling is concerned, from, from the Newark area. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Greig, did you still come back?
Yes, please. So whilst I appreciate Mike's point, and that was my initial starting period until speaking to people with trailers and vans, would it not be possible to have like AMPR camera system on site that, you know, monitors the vehicles coming in? Therefore, if we suspect someone, because there's no one saying the contractors have to go and confront and get themselves into awkward situations. But if they turn around and say this registration number has been used in this site three times a week, every week, surely then we would be able to investigate and prosecute. And, and it removes any burden then on law-abiding residents who happen to have a van and have gone, oh, I'll take the neighbour's rubbish down because they're, you know, struggling. Because again, you know, if you've got 12 times a, a year, that sounds like a lot until you go, well, actually, I take all my brother's stuff down because he doesn't have transport and I take my mum's stuff down as well and we happen to have cut the grass at different times or whatever. I think something like an AMPR system that's used all across Lincolnshire for parking enforcement and, and lots of other reasons would address that issue far easier than a permit system that is a burden, even though I didn't realise it was.
Thank you. I know at Grantham there are cameras there, but I'm not sure whether AMPR or just ordinary CCTV cameras. Mike, would you like to explain that please?
Yes, thank you. We, we do have cameras on all sites for security purposes. However, we are investigating AMPR as a, a system to, to replace what, what we have at the minute with having spot checks done at the gate. And it's, it's a, a good observation from councillor Briggs because in an ideal world, I think we'd like a situation where all of Lincolnshire's residents, residents can be registered so that their registration plates, numbers are kept on the system. And if we have AMPR, we could then have a, a, a gate system, a barrier system whereby if a, the camera spots a, a certain registration plate, it can open up to that member of the public and that member of the public can access the site. That's something that we are very much looking into. I see it as the way forward because it takes away the staff burden of, of having someone stood at the gate, which could be needless a lot of the time. So it's, it, that automation gets away from that. And yes, there would be a, a bit of a, a capital cost to start with to introduce that infrastructure, but that could be a, a saving in, in staff cost in the long run. So it's in an ideal world, that, that is where we would like to be. So it helps with trade abuse and it also helps with out of, out of county abuse because we are very mindful that there are, there are areas where we, we could have people coming from out of the county and disposing the material at Lincolnshire taxpayers' expense. So it's, it is something that we are pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Who's next speaker councillor? Councillor? Councillor Bowles?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Councillor Greig has made, raised the same issue that I was going to raise. So I fully support everything that is, is brought up and said. That has been the only, this, this has obviously been well publicised in the media that this decision was coming about over the last few weeks and that is the sole issue that my residents have raised with me, though it's those families who have a van as their car. So I fully support what councillor Greig has said, so I won't go over that again. But just in general terms, you know, like I say, the residents that I represent, you know, wanted this change and support it. So I, I do support it and encourage councillor McNally to support that as well. You know, it just gives people that flexibility, you know. Councillor Baxter said about being organised. We're not all organised, you know, with the greatest respect at weekends and stuff, you know, take example in our house, the other Sunday, weather was rubbish, so the missus decided we were going to clean out the daughter's bedroom, resulted in boxes, seven or eight bags of rubbish. If we could have just taken that to the tip on Sunday afternoon when we finished, instead we had to book a slot and go on the Monday. For us, not a problem, we've got a garage, it just went all in the garage. But as councillor Austin alluded to, you know, similar, a lot of my residents don't have garages, they live in flats, you know, they're not able to store amounts of rubbish, you know, even for 24 hours. So I just think it, you know, it assists everybody. I was surprised what a big issue it was on the doorstep during the election campaign. So like I say, my residents support this, so I support it and encourage the council to remove it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I've got two large bags of rotting grass in my garage and I can't wait to get them back down to tip. Who's next speaker? Councillor Ashton?
Thank you. Very briefly, incredibly delighted to see this come forward. I certainly know from parish councils that I attend and speaking to local residents over recent times, the booking system has been a considerable cause of concern and consternation. So I'm delighted that it appears that we are listening to those concerns and responding. And I, and I fully support going back to a, the, the ability simply to drop your rubbish. If people are doing the right thing and wanting to take their rubbish to our tip, we should be encouraging them to do that. So it's about getting a fair balance. And in the public's, in, 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 in the public's perception, councils exist, one of our core functions as councils is to see that their rubbish is disposed of or that they're able to dispose of it, to assist them in disposing of their rubbish. It's a function that we've done since very early in the, in our municipal history. And I think it's, it's a reasonable expectation. My question is around the pre-registration system. I know this has already been covered in debate. I'm, would fully welcome a gate system, AMPR. In the 2020s, it seems bizarre that we are still having to have someone doing those spot tech, those spot checks when the technology exists to do it much more efficiently and without that confrontation. In terms of pre-registration, is there the facility to pre-reg, and this may come with a gate system and AMPR, but essentially if someone had turned up with their van or their trailer for the first time, it's that being turned away which is where they are going to get the absolute worst customer experience that in their view they could have. And it feels again, that is a point at greatest risk, that they don't actually take the contents of their van or their trailer home with them and come back another day. That's the point at which it may end up in a farmer's gateway. So is there a means of doing pre-registration while you are there in the queue with a mobile phone to quickly run through that form, input your details and go through the system, particularly if it's your first time, rather than being turned away and having to come back again? Because that feels to me to be a fundamental part of the, you know, that people have come to get rid of their rubbish and we have a fundamental duty to help them.
Thank you councillor.
But I welcome the rest of it.
Thank you. Very good question. Councillor Greig, do we have any more speakers? Councillor Skinner, I'm going to go to Mike to respond to all your questions.
Thank you Chairman. I agree with what's been said about a number plate system. There's a clue in the vehicle's registration details to who owns it, what, what the taxation class is, that would make it extremely simple. I really do like to do simple systems. So at, at times that we've got peak use, these aren't, you can predict peak use, may I ask that on our website somewhere, when we go, we can give people a clue? give people a clue when these areas are going to be absolutely packed out in order to avoid causing local traffic difficulties? Because the times when people rock up to use the facilities, they'll be fairly predictable. So what I'm saying is, if it's quiet at a certain time of day, we could actually produce some figures to give people a guide, stop them wasting their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Skinner, councillor Ashton. Mike, could you answer both questions, please?
Yes, just in the second question, that's an easy one to respond to. One thing we are doing, Mr Chairman, is we are looking at whether or not we can put historical peak usage hours on the website so that people can get an idea, because surprisingly enough, it does become obvious when the peaks are, and we have the cameras to enable us to report that kind of data at the moment. So it will take a certain amount of time, officer time, to actually pick out and just log the peak usage for certain periods, so we could do so many weeks and then actually advertise that on our website, as you would get with other things as well. If you go on Google, you do get even things like shopping, peak use, when's the best time to go, or using public transport, things like that. That information is becoming more readily available and it's something that we are looking to replicate ourselves. Whether we could do something on a bit more of a live system, in an ideal world, it would be, we'd like the situation where people could possibly go online and see how busy a site is. However, one thing that we are mindful of is that that could take time and money to implement, and then by the time someone has actually driven to site, then that situation may have kind of subsided or escalated. So it may not have value at this point, but certainly if we have the historical information on peaks and troughs, it might help people better decide when they can use the sites. Because I think, as all of us would do, we all think, oh, I'm free on a Saturday or Sunday, I'll go to the household waste recycling centre, and then you're very surprised when everybody else has the same thought. But even on a Saturday and Sunday, there are peaks and troughs, so it's, and every site has a different kind of profile in that regard. So that's something that we are looking at. And in terms of councillor Ashton's question on vehicles being turned away, I think it's kind of inevitable that we will have some kind of discussion on the gate with residents who have certain vehicles. And this is why, if we don't have something in place to essentially vet them in advance and give us some confidence that they are a legitimate user and they're not just a passing tradesman that's just done a job and he thinks he can dispose of material at short notice without having to pay for it in the proper way, it's something that we are relying, at the moment, we will be relying on contractor staff and experience to get them to establish if someone is suspicious. And I think they do have excellent judgement, and when they see repeat offenders who they know may be local businesses or people that are advertising on Facebook to do trips to the tip on behalf of people, it does become quite common knowledge quite quickly, and it is surprising how much information, knowledge and experience that the site staff have in identifying these types of users. So it's something that we will always try and avoid confrontation at the gate, and we've said that we're not going to take a absolute zero tolerance policy, because we want to have the evidence in place. If we can, if there's any doubt, let the individual into the site and then we can investigate that further after the event. But we don't want to encourage confrontation, because that's where the escalation gives the service a bad reputation and it's not ideal for the site staff as well. So we do give them a lot of discretion over what they allow on site. And I think that's fair, because we can't have a policy that fits every eventuality and they will have to use their judgement, as they have done in the past before the booking system came into place. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Any further questions?
There's no further questions from any of the committee, but I do have a proposal I'd like to put forward if that's acceptable to you, Mr Chairman.
Yes, have you written it out?
I have written it down. So I propose that the committee support the recommendations as set out on page 63 with the change to recommendation two, that we look at removal or the fairest use of the registration system used for residents with vans or trailers, but to take the other recommendations as they are.
Right, thank you very much indeed. Well, the actions recorded are, the committee is invited to, one, consider the report and to determine whether it supports the recommendations to the executive council for waste and trading standards on pages 63 of the report. Two, agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive council for waste and trading standards, for those who've been captured by Kiara. And the proposal is, I move that the committee supports the proposed recommendations and agrees to pass on our comments to the executive council for waste and trading standards. And can you please councillor Griggs, read out your second proposal?
Yeah, so it's the proposal as in you've just read out, but with a recommendation change on appendix one. So one and three stay the same and two changes to, instead of approves the continuation, that bit's removed and it says, looks at the removal or fairest use and then carries on of the registration system and then two be removed from there as well. And then again, it still recommends, recommendation three delegates to the executive director in consultation with the executive councillor to look at the best way of approaching that.
Do you have a second for your proposal? Good. Right, we're going to go to the votes then. Yes councillor Baxter.
Can I just clarify, I've been struggling with my online agenda. By agreeing with this recommendation, are we agreeing that we would stick with the proposal to the booking system, or that we would go back to a free-for-all for want of the better word, or a hybrid of the two?
Yeah, if you'd like me to clarify, so page 63, I'll read the recommendation out in full. Subject to the removal of Covid-19 social distancing guidance approves the removal of the HWRC booking system to allow residents to have uncontrolled access to the HWRCs. And then the one that I read out and then, that I changed rather, and then recommendation three, as is on the paper, which just delegates authority to executive director and executive councillor.
Yep, that's clear now. You have to be that councillor Baxter. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. Any against? No? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. We'll now move on to item 11, and we are now 10 minutes behind schedule, so please keep your questions succinct. Yes councillor Ashton?
Mr Chairman, just to give you notice that I will have to wander off about half past 12, I'm sorry for that, I've just got a diary clash.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. So item 12 is construction of the hub building, South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone. This is a pre-decision item on the construction of the hub building, South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone. The report and relevant apprentices can be found on pages 79 to 107 of the agenda pack. The report will be presented by Simon Wright, Principal Officer, regeneration, who's attended today by teams. The views of the committee will be reported to councillor Martin Hill OBE, the leader of the council, executive council for resources, communications and commissioning, and to councillor Colin Davie, executive council for economic development, environment and planning, when they consider the decision between the 15th and 29th of July 2021. Over to you Simon.
Thank you very much councillor Wotton, and with that reminder on the time constraints this morning, I won't go through the repaper in a lot of detail, because I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to consider its contents. But if it would assist you all today, I would like to pull out one or two highlights really to provide some context, as much as anything. The Food Enterprise Zone in South Lincolnshire is, as you all will be aware, an incredibly important project for the county council to provide that facility and the support for the food agri sector in the county and beyond, recognising the importance of that sector as we come out of the effects of the pandemic and Brexit etcetera. Though we are very passionate about making sure the scheme is a success. With that in mind, we've been very hard at work to deliver phase one of the Food Enterprise Zone and provide all the services to that site. And what we would like to do on plot 12 of the Food Enterprise Zone is build a building which we're referring to, the hub, and I think that sums up very succinctly what we want the building to be. We want it to be the focus for the Food Enterprise Zone. We want it to provide a mix of workshops and office space, which we will let on market terms, but on easy-in, easy-out leases, which will follow exactly the model of our successful business centres that we have across the county, again, which members I'm sure will be familiar with, for example, Aventis in Market Deeping and Mercury House at Gainsborough, for just two examples. So plot 12 is on land that the council owns, it's on phase one. It's a service site, planning is dealt with through the local development order, which South Holland District Council adopted back in 2018. And we are all systems go for the construction. As the paper says, we've done some initial groundwork. I think it's very important for me to stress that the construction costs are being met fully by the Getting Building Fund, so this will not have any impact on the council's own capital programme. It's all using, it's all being, all the capital's being provided by the Getting Building Fund. And as I say, we hope the building will be an extremely strong focus and a catalyst to attract small businesses and spin off operations and create that mix of collaboration space and where people can really sort of share ideas and innovate and come together and make the Food Enterprise Zone the success that we all want it to be. That's a very quick summary of the context, which I hope just provides some support for the detail in the paper. And if it assists the committee to gather some time back, I'll invite questions at this point, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed Simon. I'm now going to open it up to members of the committee for questions. Councillor Griggs, any questions?
Councillor Baxter.
Councillor Baxter.
Thank you. This looks like a welcome.
Thank you chairman, please.
Sorry, thank you chair. This looks like a welcome addition to the landscape of Lincolnshire. I just wondered if the officer could comment on what environmental features there are in terms of either renewable energy or biodiversity beyond the statutory minimum. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that question councillor. That's a really good question. It's something that we've considered very, very carefully in terms of how we provide mainly power to the site, and we did look very closely at alternative methods of power delivery and an alternative power solution. I think ultimately, we felt that the amount of land available for phase one was quite constrained, and a lot of the options that we were considering in terms of PV cells and anaerobic digestion etcetera, would have taken up quite a lot of land, which would have taken away scope for new businesses to occupy that land. So it was, you know, we struggled to maintain the viability of the scheme. Phase one, we decided to go with a very traditional model for the provision of power. I think that's a question that can come back on to the table actually now, because we're now looking at delivering phase two of the Food Enterprise Zone, which is on the additional 28 acres of land to the north of the hub building site, which I've described. And I think with that greater land parcel, there are opportunities to look again at sort of innovation for land, for power supplies etcetera. And what I should say in terms of the hub building, we are going for BRIAM very good, but we are very, very close indeed to getting BRIAM excellent. And I will be working with the contractors and the design team over the coming weeks just to try and nudge it over the line to get that BRIAM excellent, because it would be a great selling point for us to be able to say we've got that status.
Thank you Simon. Councillor Baxter, do you have a follow-up question?
No.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. Councillor Griggs, any further questions? Councillor Skinner.
Thank you chairman. I very much welcome this development. It strengthens the food industry of the south and east Lincolnshire. I just hope that the Port of Boston will receive more use in making it, let's say, more environmentally friendly, rather than lorries charging up and down all the counties. So I very much look forward to more use of Port of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skinner. Any further questions councillor Griggs? No. Members of the committee, we have two actions here. One, excuse my voice is going a bit here, one, consider the attached report and to determine whether it supports the recommendations to the leader of the council and to the executive council for economy and development, environment and planning, which are set out on page 81 of the report. Agree any additional comments to be passed on to the leader of the council and to the executive council for economic development, environment and planning. I move that the committee supports the proposed recommendations and agrees to pass on our comments to the leader of the council and to the executive council for economic development, environment and planning. All those comments have been captured by Kiara. Do I have a second? Councillor Fleetwood, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That is carried. Thank you very much indeed, thank you. The last main item on the agenda is proposals for a scrutiny review. This item is on pages 109, 117 of the agenda pack and considers the requests made by the overview and scrutiny management board on 17th of June, that each overview and scrutiny committee identify potential topics for an in-depth scrutiny review, which will be undertaken by the two scrutiny panels. The report will be presented by Kiara. Kiara?
Thank you very much chairman. On the 17th of June 2021, the overview and scrutiny management board agreed to request that each review and scrutiny committee identifies potential topics for in-depth scrutiny reviews, which would be undertaken by the two scrutiny panels, panel A and panel B, taking into account the prioritisation toolkit. As you will be familiar through the report, we have brought in two potential topics to be discussed today, first being the Lincolnshire agricultural sector support review, which back in February 2021, this scrutiny committee identified as a potential topic in terms of supporting farmers and as a potential topic for a scrutiny review. Initially, the committee established a working group which met back in March 2021 to identify some key lines of inquiry for this review, and proposed terms of reference were brought back into the overview and scrutiny management board, which considered them on the 17th of June 2021. In relation to the second item topic that is being suggested, this falls within the remit of this committee as well, and it was indeed as well considered at the last overview and scrutiny management board on the 17th of June, and this was in relation to town centre improvements. Any potential scrutiny review would consider what opportunities already exist for the revitalisation of town centres around the county. So what we are here asking today is to consider these two topics and indeed add or request another topic to be considered as well. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Kiara. I mean, I fully support both topics, particularly the agriculture ones, we are an agriculture-based county, and also the impact on the town centres as well. I'm now going to open up to questions. Councillor Griggs, any requests for questions?
Councillor Baxter, chair.
Councillor Baxter.
Thank you chair. I agree with the agricultural suggestion. I wonder if the town's suggestion puts us at risk of overlapping with works of district councils, but I wouldn't oppose it. But I would like to add an environmental element on to the proposals. But I would like to add an environmental element on to the proposals, which would be to look more in depth at the recycling rates that we have mentioned earlier on. I think we agreed earlier on that there are problems with education, there are national issues which affect recycling, but within Lincolnshire, and to give me, Chair, this is my first meeting, so I don't know that any in-depth scrutiny of recycling has happened in the last couple of years, but I would certainly welcome anything which reduces contamination, increases recycling and reduces overall waste. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Griggs, any further questions? No. The actions, members of the committee, are the committee is asked to consider whether to make any suggestions for in-depth scrutiny reviews for consideration and decision by the overview and scrutiny management board on the 30th of September 2021. And the proposal is based on today's discussion, I propose that the committee puts forward the following topics for consideration by the overview and scrutiny management board on the 30th of September 2021, which are, one, agriculture, two, town centre, and three, recycling rates. Are we all in agreement? Thank you, let's pass. Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item 13, and we're well in time, so thank you very much for that, the Environment and Economic Committee Work Programme. Kiera.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. As you can see in your agenda pack on pages 119 to 126, you will find the work programme for this scrutiny committee, as this has been shaped up until today. This item is intending to enable the committee to consider and comment on the content of its work programme for the coming year, and to ensure this way that scrutiny activity is focused where it can be of greatest benefit. The only amendment that has been identified, and I am bringing forward and should be incorporated within the work programme ahead of the next meeting, is in the schedule for the 30th of November 2021, we have an added item, and it is a report, Flawed and Coastal Innovation Programme Initial Submission Form, that will be coming on that day for us to make a decision. The decision frame is between the 28th of June and the 30th of June 2021, decision to be made by the executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning. And I should also make you aware that this report will also be going to the Flawed and Water Management Scrutiny Committee on the day before for information and counsel. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Kiera. Councillor Griggs, do we have any questions still regarding the work programme? Normally it's for noting only. Any questions? No? Thank you very much indeed then. I move then that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages 119 to 126, and the additional items highlighted in discussions today. Are you all in agreement? Please raise your hands. Thank you very much indeed. Congratulations, 12.30, you've made it on time, I'm really pleased, we've got under the three hours. I formally close the meeting now at 12.30, and hope that you all have a good holiday, and look forward to seeing you at the next meeting on the 14th of September.